Really fine, sounds good.
Okay, I'm pushing the go button now.
Okay. Okay. So, did you guys get the? Send that?
Yeah.
The agenda and then?
Thing you sent on the.
Yeah.
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 Google Doc.
Well, I did the, I did send the agenda out and it just, I mean, it was just a generalized agenda, but do we want to approve the minutes from the, I think we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Okay.
Is that, okay?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any objections? Okay. Okay, so then I did send out an email because I heard back from the Vermont Superintendent's Association, so I have a feeling based upon her email. They don't have copies of contracts just because it sounded like they had to reach out to.
That was very weird.
Yeah, I, I thought so too. So you got that, so do we want to, because I feel like fixing the job description is going to probably be the easiest thing to start with, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's see. So, you said you were going to fix the whole bullet point thing, Kelly?
Yep.
Okay. So you'll clean that up and then I, the one section that I had. So under leadership.
Just, you know, in the original contract?
Yeah.
Just the way that was set up, essential duties and responsibilities, the leadership and management and policy and budget were all under leadership, under essential duties and responsibilities. Now, I don't think we care about however you want to reset them is fine, but that's just sort of how they were set, that's why those are invented. Why leadership, public relations. Policy budget and management are all invented.
Were they talking about because some were bullets and some were lines?
Yes, I think you can just, we can just sort of change that and those can either become bullets or numbers under, those are, the point is that those are the essential duties and responsibilities, those five things. One, two, three, four, five. You see what I mean? That's all, I just, I should have done a mini, you know, I should have done a bullet it so I didn't. But anyway.
I guess I'm just trying to find.
Okay, I have two of those.
Do you want me to, I, I will share it with you? I just. On this correct document and not. The. Okay, so I think you should. Am I able to? I think you should be able to. Yes, it was just final as to distinguish which one to send.
Okay.
We're working on.
Right, okay. So do you see what I mean? But the point, I just didn't, oh, you know, but summary, essential duties, those are supposed to be all the way out to the left. And then under essential duties and responsibilities in about five, you know, or a tab, or five more items that are part of the essential duties, the leadership, management, policy, budget and public relations. Are all part of her duties and I, I think they are part of the essential duties, I don't think they're in the, you know, you see what I mean? Then completely separate from that is supervision received, supervisory responsibilities. Okay, qualifications, that's all, I just, I didn't, I should have put bullets that indicated invented underneath, anyway.
Should I share the screen of the?
Definitely.
Yeah.
I think so.
Sure.
I think it would be helpful for people to want to see it again. So when they know what we're talking about. Where, what do you want here?
Okay, so.
I'm gonna try.
Okay. Oh. Can I have the wifi thing over there?
Thank you.
So one of the sections.
You know what?
Alright, that's okay, it's totally fine. So, one of the sections that the board. Talked about was the collaborate with the board directors, the board of directors to articulate the H U S D vision to the school community.
And also down here, I thought I was here, but.
And also the first. The first one. The first bullet and then the third bullets.
They just didn't like the word vision there because I wasn't sure why they didn't like the word vision there.
Oh, because there's, there's two, like, we have a, we have a mission, I think there's the vision of the superintendent. And then there's also the mission of the board and we're using vision for both of those things. Yeah.
Does the board have a vision or do we just have a mission?
No, the board has, we call it a vision. Vision statement. And the superintendent should also create a vision within its admin, I would assume. Which is constantly changing, but we're using those two words for the same, for two different things, but really one is a mission and one is a vision. Could be.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if that would be us going back and saying, instead of calling it the board's vision, can we call it the board's mission?
A shared mission or mission.
Because a vision is something that kind of changes and evolves with. I don't know.
Builds with others, a shared vision of proficiency.
I am on the very first page under leadership. Also, there's a shared vision. The other option is to either capitalize or not capitalize the word vision, if we're speaking about the vision of. Um, the board. The vision statement. Vision statement, then we would capitalize.
I don't think it should be capitalized.
What's that?
I don't think it should be capitalized, do you really?
But if it's not the vision state, if it's just the vision of, or, or, because this is, we say that everybody, you know, proficiency based learning of teaching this and reporting, it's all, it's, it's.
Share. Others. Builds with others.
Is shared vision even a, the correct phrase that it should be used? Or shared goal? Yeah, that's good. Because I feel like the vision, like proficiency based learning is something that we already have, it's a thing. So, it's already a, it's already an established thing that's mandated by the state, so it's kind of not something that we can alter, which I feel like a vision is something that we're kind of striving for.
And you can change.
And you can change. Yep, so a shared goal, we could go with goal, what do you think Cindy?
It's the same discussion that we had about this vision board, they also talked about, they were concerned about proficiency based learning being there and we had put that in there because we'd had a dialogue at a board meeting before.
Right.
Where they talked about the importance of proficiency based learning and getting that sort of squared away, isn't that why, a little bit why we put specifically proficiency based learning in there?
Yeah, I, and I also got the sense of like, we're going to get maybe more understanding, sorry, my neck is bothering.
I'm sure.
No, no, turning. And I think, I got the sense too that we were going to be getting a more understanding to a proficiency based learning, but it's nothing that we can change. Maybe tweak, can make better, but. That's we, that we have to have because.
What it may be is that I don't think, maybe if you take proficiency based learning out of there, it's not either a goal because it's already, it is what it is and that's something that's there. We might want a separate bullet that the superintendent will help. Board and staff in their understanding and use of or work with and proficient, you see what I mean? I mean proficiency based learning is something we have, it's ours, right? It's, so it's not a vision or, or a, a goal that way because it's there already, you see what I mean?
So expectation.
A shared.
Others.
You mean.
Builds with others, the shared expectation of proficiency based learning.
Yeah, I like expectations better than goal.
Others.
What do you guys think, I mean?
What I mean, because what you said was really good. Builds other, I just.
She's just changing. Expectation.
Builds with others, a shared expectation of proficiency based learning, so basically just take our vision and add expectation. No, it's totally fine, it's to, a shared expectation.
Of proficiency based.
Based learning, teaching us, I think that's good, that would kind of. Maybe builds is wrong.
Builds is the, it may be, that's right, and it may have been the wrong word, that may have been part of the whole problem because we. Anyway.
It's like participates? Continues? Foster? Oh.
What's another word for leads, because that's the other thing, we want the, we want the superintendent leading the rest of the staff and everybody else in their understanding of proficiency based, their understanding and their use there of.
I would say foster.
Okay.
Foster others, well, perhaps, because really what you're doing is you're giving them the tools to be able to grow and build upon those. Or guide, conduct, show, lead the way, usher, I'm just looking at.
I like guide, guides others.
I got it. Okay.
You like guides others? I think guides.
Guides others.
In a shared expecta, in a shared expectation, right?
Okay, yeah.
Look at this, it shows me what.
Yeah. Would you say guides others, what did you say?
In a shared.
Oh, in?
Yeah, in, in a shared expectation of proficiency based learning, we want people to start accepting it, right? And, no? In a shared.
In a shared expectation or with a shared expect. Guides others with a shared expectation proficiency based learning, where guides others in a.
With either, there, it's a little slightly different meaning, but it's, either of those is good, I think they're. Guides others with assured. Yeah, I like with.
With.
The, the guiding is with these other things, with assured, that's okay, that's good.
So, if we fix that sentence, then the other one I had highlighted was collaborates with the board of directors to articulate the H U S D vision to the school community. So it's just like, yeah, it's two bullets down.
Yeah.
Do you think that, I'm thinking that because we had vision in both of them, that's why it's probably highlighted that, I couldn't, did you get the sense?
Well, it's, it's different, actually now that we've taken vision out of the other one, it's quite important because it's our vision, it, it collaborates with the board. The superintendent should be involved in more community. Um. Communication.
I think vision should be capitalized.
I think so too, I think there if you capitalize vision, it's helping to, it's helping that, right now we're hearing a lot from the community, you know, about, about what the board's vision either is or isn't, right? There are people making a lot of assumptions and stuff like that and I think it would be, I think it's going to be important for us in the coming year to articulate clearly what the board's vision for this district is. It's pretty straightforward, I mean, it's the same as in a lot of districts and everything, but I think we need to be sure, I mean, I'm on the board and I'm not even sure of it, you know, I need to go back and I've saw, I've looked at it on the board site. When, you know, on the board, on Harwood Union webpage. But I just think that, I think that the, I think that the superintendent should all the time be working to help articulate and promote the board's vision, capital V, for this district.
Okay.
So I like just changing that to a capital V, that it is our, our vision, we do it too, that's not saying we don't do it.
Right, right. Well.
It says with the board of directors. Collaborates with the board of directors, we're not expecting the superintendent to manage that.
Should we highlight on this document the changes that we've made so that it's clearer?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I think if you go up to. Okay. And then just hit. And then the pen, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
And then you want to highlight that, that first sentence too?
Yeah, that we changed guide, we changed. Maybe, oh, here, I have the old one here.
Yeah.
We changed bills to guides.
Yeah. Okay. In that way, there's not any. Yeah.
And we did, yeah.
Okay, so then the next, is that attend? Is that where your first is at? Oh no, I was just going down. So the next one is the budget, so I got the sense that we need to leave everything in.
Yes.
So we'll, you want to un-highlight that?
Yes.
So I think if you go none, if you go up to the, the pen and then do none. It's still highlighted.
Now go up to none.
Yes.
I like pink.
So I guess, so that was good, so I feel like that, that's an easy fix, I didn't think that there was anything in there.
No.
Okay, so if we go. Should I just highlight budget to say that we didn't change him, it's just the word budget to say that we didn't change him? Yeah, and that we un-highlighted it, yeah, we kept it in, I think that would be fine. Just want them to know that. Yeah. And then under, okay, so supervision received, so this was. So I. I think what I got was that. People were okay with a yearly eval, did, and I feel like, because. Did anybody else get that sense?
Yeah, and what was the other word they were using rather than not be, not to call those a check-in, a six month check-in? And so I think just during the first year, I think if we just clarify that for the first year.
And currently we do every two years. Every two years, so my understanding was, and I, the check-in for the first, the first year, just the six months check-in. Yeah. But then every year kind of chunked, so be like, these are the things that we're going to evaluate you on this year and then the second year, we're going to evaluate you on this, this stuff, so it's not the full evaluation. That's fine. All the time, it's just, it's chunked, that was what I, that was the sense that I had gotten, so that it's not so time consuming and daunting that we're going to do one through 10. Right. But we're really just going to focus on community engagement and admin leadership, I don't know, like just throwing two things out, right? And I also feel like the chat, like the six month check-in could be with board leadership, I, did, did anybody else hear that?
I did, and I thought that was fine.
Okay, so why don't we start with at least the, the check-in thing, so I. Yeah. Okay, so reports to the.
Reports to the board.
Which will perform an annual evaluation. Um, well, should we just write? On set.
In the.
Topics or?
Will perform an annual evaluation, oh, there I see, we can't say on chunks, probably.
On set, on set topics or set goals.
undefined.
undefined.
Yes.
undefined goal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I like that.
undefined goals and.
And then in the first year, the board will do a performance rather before, we will do a checklist and not the board, leadership team. Right?
Yeah, I think that that would be fine.
Can we specify that in her job description?
I think it's a check-in just for the first year and I think it's, and Tari even suggested with the board leadership because it is, I mean, we did the, the eval and that's, that it's a lot, it's, it's a lot, so.
Yeah.
Let's see.
But not end again in one, in one year, we're saying that we're going to do the.
First year. Just in the first year.
Yeah.
So, so they're hired and.
We can say the board will also do, or something like that, a performance review, because the, and again in one year is, is, is a little weird, is it one year from the six months or is it again?
Six months.
An annual one. You see what I mean? Like you could read that, we'll do a performance review in six months, period. In one, and, and then we don't need to say anything more because we've already said we're going to perform an annual evaluation on specific goals.
Can we do, I, I feel like in the first year, the board will do a check-in at six months, I feel like it needs. What?
At six months.
At six months, I know, it just, yeah. You know what? I'm gonna, we do that. Okay. I'm gonna switch it. Oh, put that first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. So in the first year, the board will do a check-in in six months. Can we put at, we'll do a check-in at six months, I feel like there needs or.
What about during the first year? The board will do a performance review in six months. We'll do the, during the first year, the board will do a six month performance with, check it.
Yeah. Yeah. Followed by one year review. So I do think that we need to do with, with the. With the check-in, it needs to make sure we put in with board leadership.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. No, no, you're. So just so I understand, so if we're saying followed by a one year review, does that mean like in one year or is that six months later? Oh. I would say.
I'd say, how about followed by the annual review? By the first annual review?
I would say six months later.
Okay, six months later, okay.
Just the, just for clarity, yeah, we'll do a check-in with the board leadership followed by a. Followed by review at the one. By the review at the one year mark or the one year whatever, just so that. You know. So we can be really clear. Followed by, followed by a review at the one year. Yeah. Day of hire.
Followed by review after, uh, what, followed by review one year after, a day of hire after. At the completion of the first year, at the end of this first year.
Yeah, I like that. Year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And put an A, did you put an A in there up there, the board will do a six months check-in, you need an A.
Now, do we, do we want, is this where we talk about? With the yearly one, it's certain goals, do we do? Or no? I think, just leave it the way it is. And then, um. Should we say like subsequent years or that too big of a word, like? The following years, reports to the H U S D, which will perform.
Thereafter.
Thereafter.
They always report to the Harvard.
I don't know if we need to do reports to the, or the H, the H U S D board will perform an annual valuation. Annual evaluation on defined goals.
That's fine, that's.
Okay.
You could, you could say followed by the annual evaluation at the completion of the first year. Then the Harvard Union School Board will perform and. On some, on defined goals. Each year following or something like that.
Now, just so I can, you don't think somebody would be confused where it says, you know, do a six month check-in with the board leadership, followed by a review at the completion of the first year, do you think that person would understand that, that? The review would be done by the whole board and not just the board leadership? By a review, followed by a. Followed by a.
An evaluation.
Board review?
A board review.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Do I have to put H U S? No, I don't think so. A board review at the completion of.
A full board review, have a.
I think word is fine because this is.
As opposed to board leadership.
Yeah, I think, because we defined, I think it was board leadership we would put.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Does that feel good with everybody?
I would just say, the only thing you might change is the Harvard Union will perform annual evaluations on defined goals. It's not just, and, if there's not just one, we're not going to perform one annual evaluation.
Oh, we'll, we'll perform.
Annual evaluation.
Yeah, okay. I think that's good, yeah.
Okay.
I feel, I, I feel good about that. Okay, so the, the last thing I have on the job description is under supervisory responsibilities. Is, we just take out that very last sentence. The negotiates contracts because.
With the HR director.
Yeah, I think, you know, like when, so I was on the last negotiating team, it was myself and Christine, Michelle, and then we had a lawyer, so before that on the contract, before that I was on negotiating team. Bridget was involved, but I think it sounds like we're going to get away from that and use. A lawyer, so anyway, so I think that's the only thing I had left on this one. Did anybody else have any comments or things that maybe I forgot to write down? I thought there was another section in here that said HR. Oh, so. The beginning. Yeah. And because we technically don't have that. Where was that?
Which one, I'm sorry. I have one more note under leadership.
Okay.
I just had that, that they were concerned, we don't have anything stating the instructional leader. Um, and then instruct, instructional leadership has a work, has the working knowledge of best practice. I, I, I thought that was up above, I mean, I thought that sort of permeates the whole job description, but.
Right.
I had jotted that down.
Um, so would we put that in position objective? What was it they, that you?
What I wrote down was instructional leadership and then, and then I had written, is the instructional leader at one point, you know, the superintendent's the instructional leader and, and just focusing on the education piece of things, instructional leadership has a working knowledge of best practice. And, and, and. I think it's fine, the way, I think the way we've rewritten this actually sort of takes care of that, because we talk about teaching proficiency based learning and, and assessment, those are all the things you're looking at for best practice, so.
Should we have something in there that says that most kind of staying abreast of all of that's best practice or refreshed of that best practice?
Yeah.
Must promote.
Has a working knowledge of best practice and keeps up with changing standards.
Yeah.
Keeps up with.
Should we put that in the leadership?
I would put it under a bullet on its own.
Under. Under summer. Okay, leadership, yeah.
Because that's what we're talking about, instructional leadership, we're talking about, yeah.
Okay, so put it under leadership?
I would put it as the second bullet under leadership. I'm looking at what our other leadership things are.
Okay, so let's. Put that back into word.
Serves as the instructional leader with a working knowledge of best practice.
Why capitalize instructional leader? Serves as the instructional leader as that.
As with the best educational practice, we can say. And then, period, and then say keeps up with. Changing, keeps up with and share, what did we say? Maybe it can be one sentence.
Or how about serves as an instructional leader through maintaining. Through maintaining. Best. Practice. And. Up to D.
Yeah, I said, I, what I'd written down, what I liked, I wrote it down, because somebody else said it on the board, but they talked about having a working knowledge of best practice that they. That it's, um, you know, it's like a concrete, they have a working knowledge of it. Not only do they know it, like you can read it in a book, but if you don't know how to make it work, you know what I mean? I just like that working knowledge, has a working knowledge of best practice, and keeps up with changes, that's how to do it, has a working knowledge of best practice. And keeps up with changing standards.
That serves as an instructional leader of working on the best practice and.
Keeps up with changing standards and. An instructional. All that, we're using instructional to a lot, but with best standards and education. Educational.
Alignment.
Practice. Did I just say that? Keeps up with best, we just said best practice. Keeps up with changing educational standards, period. We don't need to have another thing.
Yeah, keeps up with. And keeps up with educational standards, no changing standards.
No, I'd say changing standards.
We would have standards, changing and, and educational standards.
Yeah.
Okay, changes and education.
Stuff with changes. And educational. Standards.
Keeps up as a working knowledge. We can, oh no, how about this, has a working knowledge of best practice and educational. Standards and keeps up with changes. No. Okay, so what do you have now?
Serves as instructional leader of working knowledge. Of best practice and keeps up with changes and educational standards.
Yeah. With the working knowledge, it's, it serves as an educational leader with a working knowledge.
Okay.
Not a leader of working knowledge, she's a leader, she has a working, we want her, or him or her, to have a working knowledge, I think. So with a working knowledge of best practice. With a working knowledge of best practice and keeps up with changes and.
And they should be with a working knowledge, or you want with the?
With a working knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah. With a working knowledge of best practice and keeps up with changes.
And educational standards.
Yeah, changes with changes though, though.
Well, isn't there a lot of stuff that comes down from the state?
Yes, yeah.
So it's whatever the A O E.
Yeah, I mean, that's how come we have proficiency-based learning.
Right, so things that we, for example, also she, she also lets, well currently. Bridget lets us know when policies come down and we have to implement those. With, yeah.
Oh, so we could say changes in policy, in education policy and standards.
Because I think they'll wanna know what changes.
Yeah, let's say, let's say that, let's do that, I like that adding policies, keeps up with changes in policy and education standards. Changes in policy and changes in education standards, does that make sense, Cal?
Do I capitalize policy or education, or anything in that? I don't think so.
I wouldn't.
Okay, this serves as, as the instructional leader with a working knowledge of best practice and keeps up with changes in policy.
Yes.
I really like that a lot.
Should be educational standards, or just education standards?
Educational.
Yeah.
Okay. No, no, you're totally fine. Darn highlighter. Okay.
All right.
Okay, so did anybody else have anything else on this?
Maybe it was on the other one.
With the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That had the.
Yes, yes, the contract.
Okay. All right, so we're good with this. Do we need to fit, are we good with bullets on this?
So I guess I was just going to do, like, all dots, even though it's, I, I think if we just. So, I understand, like, the, unless I were to put a bullet by leadership and a bullet by, and then have this be.
The indented thing.
This is, right, so this is what I was thinking.
I, I would do just what you said you were gonna do, just now. I would not put bullets next to the major, the. We could make those, you know what, you could make those one font bigger. Man, we could make, you could make summary. Essential duties and responsibilities, all of those are. And then the. And then bullet, I think there should have been bullets next to leadership, management, policy, budget, you see what I mean, the indents on this.
Yeah, well, so what if we put bullets next to leadership?
Do we?
Management, right. And then do we do numbers, or we still keep the little dashes?
I wouldn't keep that, change those dashes to bullet, oh, those dashes underneath, oh, okay, I would, you could do numbers.
Only because if we.
Does that clarify that that's under that? I think it does.
Yeah, so I did just, so maybe if I do this, and then do.
But then I, will that look okay if it's? In the same line as essential duties and responsibility, okay, yeah, that.
No, I'd move it in.
Yeah.
Should move in, yes, yeah, should be indebted from that leadership, and then the numbers under that, those are leadership things.
And then all of this, so do you?
Down to where it says management.
Numbers?
Yes, I want, yeah, so that builds, identifies. Collaborates as three, yeah, go all the way down to management, to above management.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, just drag that down to.
At the hat. Okay. There we go.
There, one more. Okay, go back, you don't want to include management in that.
There we go.
There you go, now that's numbers. Numbers are under the.
Number, and then do.
There you go.
There we go.
Is that what you were?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then management has a bullet in front of it, management has a bullet.
Yeah, you know what, I'll do all of that later.
Okay, and then numbers under, where those dashes are under management can be numbers, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that give you what my outline was, sorry? That is what it is, I mean, that was how it worked. I think that's good.
So, do we feel good about this, the job description?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing this one. Okay, and then I can share the. Let me find the contract. My son had to show me the nifty, easier way to find Google Docs.
Oh, yeah, I found Google Docs, but now I have to find the contract.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so now I will. I think that's the one, okay.
What did we call it? Tell me what we finally called.
You want me to just share it with you guys?
That would be awesome, thank you. Will I go to my Google Docs?
Okay. So I just reset that. So, as, as far as the, the first thing was about the health and whatever. Dental, do we just take that all out? I mean, I know that. It has to be updated, or do we just leave that in?
Which one is this?
So it's on, it would be the second. So I just, I did send it to your email.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Sorry. No, no, you're, no, agenda, you're totally fine, okay.
Try up here. Oh, no, it's right here.
Oh, it's right there? So.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I. Brought up about how we'd have to update insurance, so do we just take that out, or are we just leaving that, and then Michelle could take it out? Then by having.
Why don't we just take it out, if Michelle's gonna take it out?
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and just delete this whole thing.
Which one are you?
Well, it's under health and life insurance, and so I figured that Michelle will just. Put in whatever it is.
Okay.
Should we say per?
CFO, what do we?
Yeah.
What is your position?
I think that we should also highlight the changes that we're making on this.
I agree, so I'll go ahead and delete that.
Oh, I see, okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Per. CFO.
Yeah, and our contract, right, isn't that, because it's on, it's already on our contract.
No, but it has to be updated. So per CFO updated.
Yeah, yeah.
Or updated per CFO?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me know, it's easier for me to type, and then.
Do you wanna type, you mind?
I don't mind, okay, no, I definitely don't mind, I just, I don't get it, I feel like you're meeting.
So if you, yeah, if you wanna type, I just deleted that, if you wanna just.
You did that, I already did that online.
Okay.
The one I'll finally save, okay.
My son had to show me about Google Docs, because I had no idea. Okay, so I'll just highlighted this as a change, and then.
Okay.
Okay. So. Now, then the other thing, I think that we, they, we're gonna take out this Family Medical Leave Act language.
Yes, because they said that's in law and we don't need it in our contract. I just thought after all of us were family.
I, yeah. Okay, so, vacation.
We don't have anything, and then they also said they didn't need paternity or maternity, because that's all in law, too, right?
Okay, so. As you guys saw in my email, I heard back from the Vermont School Board Association, so you have. So principals get 25 days, okay, so that's what I did write down, our principals get 25 days.
Good, okay.
So, two, what I heard back was two districts have 20, four districts have 25, one district has 30, I added ours with one district of 35. And then one district of 27, so here's where the thing of the HR director.
Yeah.
So. So are we gonna keep 30? Do you think we should go down to 25 and keep it in line with what our principals and admin currently have? I mean, it felt like 30 was not. Supported by most board members, because if that's not an accurate.
Right.
And we're really encouraging them to take that time.
And, and here's your thing, too, always with a contract, isn't there sometimes negotiations within a contract? So I, so as, you know, as she had stated in a board meeting, her vacation time had been upped, upped.
Instead of salary.
Salary, so why don't we go down to 25 days?
Okay.
For the first year, if we end up with the superintendent who's early on in her super, or his superintendent regime. Then, then you, you wanna start it around 25 days.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, and they said, I, where, did I have something, like, they said start off, start with five weeks, and that would be five weeks.
Do teachers get 25 days aside from not working in the summer, or is that there's?
No, I, I think that they get. I, I think that there's less.
Yeah.
25, but I don't.
But that's what you said, it's a vacation.
No, no, I think it's.
Principles, I didn't mean teachers' principles, right, there's full year contract, right?
Yeah, and so.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Okay, so. I don't know, I, I didn't. I felt like there was maybe one or two board members that liked the sentence about. Is encouraged to use two weeks of vacation time, but I don't know, did anybody hear anything?
I know, I just heard that they all felt some, some issues around that. That superintendent's not able to take that, you know, it was on the one hand, they were saying give her 30, you know, 25, 30 days, on the other hand, they're. Which they think she needs, or he needs, but.
The reality is.
The reality is that they're not gonna be able to use it.
Right. Yeah.
So, and, and. And I was rethinking this, the comment I'd made, that is there a way you could put in that they, the vacation year starts after six months, but they didn't like that idea at all? So.
So I guess, I guess take out the sentence with the employee shall document the use of approved vacation days with HR director? Because I don't think.
Frankly, I think all of the things in this contract, we can give recommendations if we wanted, we could recommend 25 days.
Yeah.
You know, say we recommend 25 days, but basically, I think salary, and we're not doing salary.
No.
I don't believe we should be doing salary, other than maybe a recommendation, if we had what was the, a, a, a spread of salaries.
Yeah, and I, I had been emailing with Tari too, and I think she had said something like, a recommendation also comes from John, and I think. Bridget, like what she said in the last board meeting, that she was going to share, so.
Yeah.
Well, and John had made the recommendation that it be where Bridget is left off, what she's currently making.
Who, who, who?
John.
Is Gatto.
Gatto, our, our consultant.
Oh, the superintendent, oh.
Yeah.
I don't think I would do that, she's been here for 20, 15 years, or 20 years. What, how many?
I think, though, we have to make sure that we're competitive, because we have to, we have to be able to attract somebody.
Yes, we do, I don't, I think we absolutely need to be competitive.
So do we, so back to this, so does the employee shall document the use of approved vacation days? Do we just leave it at that, and not say with HR director?
Yeah.
Say with board? Or review, or to resend, have, maybe the board should.
Maybe.
You can just drop with HR director, they, they will, the employee shall document the use. Right, and the board may review these records, period, not from time to time, just that we have the opportunity, we have the option to. Or do you think we should do it from time to time?
Well, I think that. Well, I think that, um. And these will be reviewed at annual, at the annual review, these will be. You know, I think that that could, I think that we could put something like that in, because that would go to the case in point of people saying, are they able to use their vacation time?
Right.
So I think that, um, so if we see a superintendent gets, say it's agreed upon twenty-five days and they've used six. Then I think that it's good reflection. It's good reflection, and, and I do, I still like that sentence that we're keeping in, in encourage you to use two weeks of vacation. So it would be like, so why have, didn't you, you know, the contract says we encourage you to use, why weren't you able to take two weeks? So I think that there could be some accountability. You know what I mean? We'll review these records at, well, that, that's two, but what we say at the annual review, I don't like the review twice. Right, um.
Evaluation, are we calling it?
Uh, the employees shall document the use of approved vacation times, and the board will review. And, and, and it's like.
Annually?
Annually. Yeah.
I think we just wanna know that they're using some.
Well, right, and so if somebody brings it up, we could be like, well, the discussion was that we were concerned they couldn't use it, so if they, if we review the vacation time. At the review for, we're recommending maybe the review. Um, then we can be like, we can, we can do accountability, like why were you not able to take vacation time? And what is going on? Let's go back down to twenty, and let's give you the. Right.
The salary.
The, increase the salary. Why, yeah, and why were you not able to put a plan in place for a substitute superintendent during that two weeks? I think that is a really great reflection piece, and it is holding the board accountable for making sure that. Yes. That time is being used, and it's not just being thrown away, you know?
Do we have anything in our policies that talk about, uh, the, the other people filling in, like where Bridget's been, you know, been on leave or taking this time and that?
I don't.
She, she sort of got two principals to be her acting superintendent.
So I got the sense that that was, uh, the first time, something like that, so I've been on the board since my third year.
Okay.
And that's the first time we've had a, I'm gonna call it a substitute superintendent. Correct.
So is, is that something that should be in the contract then? That they would, they're responsible for assigning. For, um, identifying.
If they're gonna be going more than two weeks. One second, can you change that to a maximum of thirty days, cause if we're allowing them to, uh, carry over five. Then that, it would only be thirty days, not thirty-five. On the bo, oh, yeah, there, yeah, sorry, at the top and the bottom.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good catch.
So, yeah, I mean, do we, do we?
Is it her responsibility to identify a sub and make sure they know what their duties are?
I. I would think that it would be, but I don't.
Is that part of a contract? Or is it a policy? That's why I was asking if that, if that's a policy.
I think it's best practice. Yeah, I don't think it's, maybe we don't need to, those two things, I think it's best practice, just as if she's in charge, she, and the only reason why we're using she is. Right, is in charge of finding those subs, it's not the teacher's responsibility, it's the superintendent's responsibility. Okay, so I guess she as head of schools knows. Who best, who would be able to fulfill those obligations. So I don't think we need to put it into the contract.
Okay.
Um, so I think that that's good, and I think that we have explanation as to why we came up. We came up with this, plus I can do another write-up so that it's clear. Do you, okay, I can also put some of this in the, um, okay. Yeah, I think that was the only sticking point on the contract. That, yeah. Was the benefits thing, then, um, the vacation days, and we took out the FMLA and the Vermont parental leave. All that stuff, I think otherwise. I think otherwise that was, uh. It. I'm gonna stop sharing my screens, everybody go with that.
So simple.
And I can ask Tari if, um, or I could email her and find out, um, as far as the board meeting next week. Do, do they want to put on the agenda to look at again? Or just submit it for, what do you guys think? You think we should just submit it for a final look? Anybody have a?
I, I, I mean, they can always change, they can always say we don't wanna do a final look, you know, we, no, we think we wanna do another, I think we can. Set it up so that it's on our agenda, that it's a final look, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then if we do a final look, fine, otherwise, we have to put it off another month, which we can do, because we're not gonna be hiring somebody for a little while.
So, yeah, so I feel like this could be our final thing, and then we just submit it for them, I think it was the seventeenth. Let me see, yeah, not this coming board meeting, but the next one. I think it was going to be the, uh, yeah, the seventeenth, and then we don't meet again until December eighth. Yeah, okay. So I said, um, in the contract, change, change in vacation days. We change from thirty to twenty-five with the accountability to the board annually, this is to ensure that the superintendent is taking time off and if he uses the time granted. Yeah. Was there just one spot in the, um. Around the HR? Yeah, I think that's the only thing that I, that was, I think so.
They, yeah, they didn't want us to be referring to an HR person, since we don't have them.
Right. Yeah, I think that was the only. I think that was it. So, is that for next meeting, so we will submit this, this, for this coming and have them see if they wanna review it again? Yes, um, yeah, so I can, um. So we'd have to get to Tari probably tonight. Oh, I see, okay. I don't know with, um, the latest thing with the bond, I don't know if they'd even have room on the agenda for.
They may not.
So I think they were aiming for the seventeenth, so we'll just do it for the seventeenth.
Yeah.
So why don't, I think it would be. And you will submit, um, in time for approval? Yeah. On the seventeen.
Yeah.
Yep, and then, so I don't, at this point, I think if we needed another meeting, it would be pending. The outcome of the board meeting on the seventeenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna be on Zoom on the seventeenth.
Okay.
You can be right, but I can do.
Okay. Okay, are we good? Okay, so we'll adjourn at nine thirty-three. Okay.